Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council Workshop. Today is Tuesday, September 7th, 2021, and I'd like to welcome anyone that is joining us this afternoon. We have two presentations on our agenda, and the first is an internal sewer and drainage project update from Jen Spinsent. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, and Madam Mayor. I gotta tell you, I have to admit right away, I like this so much better than sitting in Zoom or Teams. This is the kind of presentation I enjoy doing. So this is wonderful. Again, thank you for having me. Every year, I like to update you people about the things that we've been doing during the summer, whether it's getting ready for our winter, doing some winter prep, or some internal sewer projects. In previous presentations, I've talked about wanting to expand the skill sets and add to the skill sets of my sewer group. We've done some excellent work in recruiting. We've got an amazing operator on the team now who is helping lead that charge right now. And with that, I think I'll start with the sewer department and talk about some of the things that they're doing. We were notified of a sewer pipe break out on Smith Street. This is right in front of, actually, the bust now, the loading dock here at the Senior Center. Right outside the Senior Center. Rob Lovell, our sewer supervisor, responded the night before, made sure the site was secure. He had a metal plate foot over the road, and everything was good. And first thing the following morning, our sewer team responded. In the excavator, you can't really see him. This is Jason Sarver. This is the new operator that I'm going to brag about a little bit tonight. He's helping to break up that asphalt. And you can see how thick that is. In some areas, that asphalt was probably 10 to 12 inches thick, just from years of overlays and repairs and what have you. This is a clay pipe, 12-inch vitrified clay pipe. Very reliable pipe. I don't want this to be an alarming slide for you when you see broken clay pipe. This pipe has been found to be intact for up to 200 years in the ground if laid properly. I believe this break was part of just a point loading issue, and after years and years of heavy traffic on the road, probably a rock or something had finally broke through. But that's not, I don't want to cause you any alarm when you see this slide. And so what they had to do, they had to cut out the broken section, add in a piece of PVC. They've spliced it together and are holding it together with a coupling there. And once that is done, they start the backfill process. This is Capone, who is our little guy on the team. I am just kidding. He is a big, strong man. To watch him move that compactor around is impressive. He just picks it up and does what he wants with it. So anyway, he's in the hole right there, just compacting, bringing the thing up to the surface. And this is our team's final product. We take it all the way up to the surface, asphalt it, and make sure it's passable for our public. One of the things that occurs when you splice in a piece of pipe with another, the inside dimensions don't always add up. So it doesn't allow for a smooth flow through the pipe. So this line has been added to our 2022 Sewer CIPP program. So we'll have this line completely replaced. So that's one continuous, smooth sewer flow through that pipe. In 2019, boy, what a winter we had. We had quite a rain event. And I believe at this time, well, at this time, I was not the manager. I was working in the DOC. We had that much rain coming down, and we got a call out on Riverview Boulevard. There was a big washout. You can see the results of this washout, or the caverns, the voids that it created. This is, again, my new operator in the sewer department responding, clearing the debris off the road, clearing the debris off the sidewalk, getting things passable and safe for public travel. We were able to get the problem figured out up on top. There's a culvert that had some issues and have since been fixed, so we're not having those issues anymore. All the drainage up on the trail through that Riverview Boulevard is in amazing condition now. And so in order to fill that void, there is no easy way. We couldn't access it with equipment. We couldn't take a dump truck up there and dump rock. We couldn't do any of that. So my sewer guys, Tim Bartlett, can't see his head down there in the bottom corner, he contacted a gentleman who would throw the rock, basically, with a conveyor belt, just sling it up the hill. And my superstar, again, Jason Sarver, he told me he has never been so nervous working on this hillside. But I have to tell you, he's got years of experience doing this type of work. That's why he was comfortable enough to get out here and do it. So what he would do is he would come in behind and compact all that material, make sure that it was going to stay in place, and we won't have this issue again with it washing out. And this is the final product of that, after that void has been filled in. They installed these BNP's. First, they threw down grass seed and covered all that exposed soil through this fabric over the top of it to help stabilize it. And this should be good through our winter season, just sitting as it is right now. They did a wonderful job. And again, this is them working outside of their normal skill sets, trying new things. And they did this enthusiastically. They wanted to do this. You know, I've got a great operator in the storm department, but his skill set is in laying pipe, not so much this kind of dirt work. And this was an exciting moment for my team. I was really proud of them for taking on this project. Boy, on occasion, they have to climb down in our sewer manholes. All right, it's not as bad as it might seem. Yes, I understand. We have a manhole inspection program in the sewer department. That was one of the things that I wanted to get started when I took on the role as manager. And the guys were able to jump on it and get a program started. So what they do is they go around, they pull lids. They pick a section of Kent, and they'll pull all the sewer manhole lids. They're looking for deficiencies in the lid. They're looking for deficiencies such as this, in this inside drop. The channel is corroded, the channel's wore out. You know, you've got to keep in mind that these sewers are caustic, too. You know, it's only supposed to be a couple of things flushed, but you know, there's all kinds of other things that get-
The paintbrush, I'm seeing?
There's all kinds of other things that get flushed in our sewers that cause erosion and stuff like this. So they found this. This was written up as part of a manhole inspection. And you see the top picture is what they found. The bottom picture is the final repair. Again, wonderful work. This is Patrick Carnahan. What a great addition to the team. I mean, this is, it looks like the photo is staged, the way this guy is smiling, but this is his attitude every day. Patrick, we need you to do this. Got it done. Wonderful addition. We have many sewer easements and sewer manhole accesses throughout Kent. And some of them are hard, if not impossible, to get to with our Vector trucks. There's a series of six manholes outside of the Kentview project on Frager Road that during the winter times, our vectors can't get to because there's, well, there is no real defined access, and it gets super muddy. It's just soil and grass there. So what they did is, with all six of those, they made it passable. They made them accessible off of Frager Road so that our vectors, those big, heavy tanks, can get up there, access the sewer manholes, get the lines cleaned, and move on to the next run. This is the final version of those sewer accesses. Again, they did six of these on Frager Road. They just finished up with the last two a couple of weeks ago. The big picture, that's looking from Frager Road up toward the manhole. A little gravel construction access there. All that asphalt you see there is actually millings that we took from the street department, from the grind and inlay program. So that's free material that they used in order to create this passable access for our Vector trucks. And of course, a small picture there, the inset, is at that sewer manhole they're trying to get to, looking back down at the street. They did a wonderful job on these. Some of our easements run behind homes. This is in, let's see, I think this is in the crossings development off of Riverview Boulevard. There was a series of manholes that run behind homes, in between homes, in a fence line. And it was overgrown with brush, and they couldn't access the manhole at the far end of this, and I'll show you that in a second. So what they did is they went in there, cleared all the debris out, and made an improved access behind these homes. This trail isn't necessarily visible from those homes either. They are separated by a green space. Here's a green buffer. But it's really important to these guys that when they're doing this kind of work, that it's pleasing to the eye, but it's also usable. You know, they need, again, their vectors are heavy, their trucks are, they're big machines. And they need to make them so that, these accesses, so that they can get to these sewer manholes. So this is a picture of the before and after, looking back toward the entrance, which is in the first couple of slides, where it was all overgrown, vegetated. And this is what they did after that. They opened it up, removed all that vegetation, brought in the rock, compacted, and made a good usable sewer access. And again, if you were, I'm going to go back up one slide. If you were to drive into the crossings neighborhood, you would see this accent, or this access. And it looks like it's supposed to be there. It's part of the neighborhood, and that's really our goal when we do work like this in those neighborhoods. While all this other work is going on that I asked the sewer crew to take on, and they're doing willingly and with a lot of enthusiasm, we still have our maintenance taking place. These are pump stations. This is one of our new ones, as a matter of fact. This is down on James Street and 64th, the GRNRA South Pump Station. I had to think about my direction there for a second. Currently, I've got a two-man team, sometimes three or four, depending on the work that needs to be done, maintaining seven sewer pump stations and 11 stormwater pump stations. Soon to have one more stormwater pump station, and I'll get to that in a second. Right now, we have, gosh, a number of pump station progresses, pump station jobs in different phases of design. All right? We just got the keys for our GRNRA South Pump Station. So they're doing, making some improvements in their garage. We're adding a washer and dryer for their sewer clothes. And we're going to seal the floor before we start bringing in shelving and our pumps and backup generators. So thank you for approving this pump station and the garage that we added to it at a later date. And there's a list there that shows the other pump stations that are in different phases of design. 81st Avenue, which is down there at Hexel, it was at 80th and 81st and 196th, GRNRA North Pump Station. So this will be clear at the other end, in the north end of this pump station, at the GRNRA. It'll be at the main outlet channel. West Valley Pump Station, it's a storm pump station, will be relocated as part of a levy project. And the bottom one, to me, that's the number one. I'm the most excited about the Linda Heights Pump Station. Right now, our engineering group is working through the RCO to get approval, to get the old pump station moved to a more accessible location and upgraded. The station, I believe, is 70 years old at this point, and it's time. I think the generator, maybe World War II, I don't know. And I adjust a little bit, but it's hard to get parts for some of this older stuff. So it really is time to upgrade. So I'm really excited about Linda Heights. It's been a long time in the making. So while they've got pump stations going on, they've got their construction progress, jobs going on. We're also doing our closed circuit pipeline inspection. Last year, we did approximately 80,000 linear feet of sewer and drainage pipeline, which is, it's okay. The team wants more, and that was them coming to me and telling me they want to do more, not me telling them I'd like them to do more. So that's always encouraging when they say we can do better without me even having to go to them. And one of the things that comes out of the pipeline inspection, I just want to, just to back up and talk about that for a minute, you know, is basically the, so what does our pipeline inspection work do for us? We get in there and we inspect all of our sewer lines and our drainage lines. We've put together many closed or cured-in-place pipe replacement or repair projects, all right? Which extends the life of our storms and sewers for up to another 50 years or more in some cases. It allows us to find areas where we've had root problems. And so every year, we do a root contract where we have a contractor come in and chemically treat all the roots in the sewers. We don't want backups in our sewer system. We want to keep the brown fluid running downhill. Only rain down the drain. We're going to move on to our storm department. That's our, you know, our slogan, "Only rain down the drain." We respond to spills every year, multiple times a year. This is a relatively easy one they got, too. This is a gravel spill, and they're getting it cleaned up. We respond to oil spills. We respond to car accidents that are leaking fluids, all in with the main goal of keeping that, the oils, antifreeze, whatever is leaking out of those cars, out of our storm drains, and keeping our storm waters clean. We also do our own easement improvements, just as the sewer does with their sewer easements and sewer accesses. We do, or the storm department, storm team, does their own easement improvements. This is up in the Brenna Vista easement development. 202nd and 91st are placed south, just up above 167. You can see it from 167. This is an area where there's a lot of deep scouring. You can kind of see there in the center of that channel, that's really bad scouring. That's debris that gets washed down and covers a culvert end at the bottom of the hill. And when that culvert gets plugged up, it causes some, it has caused water to overflow into other properties, not causing significant damage where there are claims involved, but it didn't stay within the channel it was supposed to. Here's more pictures of the scouring there on the right-hand side. It was relatively deep. You're looking at probably a three-foot cavern right there, just all, you know, from heavy flow, high volumes of water. And so they decided, you know, this is something we need to take care of this year, and they did it this year. This project took about two weeks in total. They had to gain access to it, and I'll show you the picture of that here shortly. So this is Alex Sheets, who I happily brag to Bill Thomas about, from taking him from Bill's crew, from Bill Thomas's vegetation crew, doing a lot of tree clearing and brush clearing before we could even get our equipment up in that easement and start working on the repair and restoration. A lot of trees, a lot of brush. He did a great job. And as, once they got that done, the guys were able to move in. They started at the top and started pulling material down. You can see as they're working through there, there's a picture of Alex there. He's, it looks like he's working on a log. There's a large tree down there across the trench. So we just notched it to allow water to flow through it, instead of trying to dig it out and making a big mess. He just notched it. It actually makes quite an attractive water feature, truthfully. This is after they got the scouring cleaned up. They had to widen the trench and backfill some of that scouring and go in and compact it before they could finish the final restoration. Fortunately, we had the access we needed. We were able to get rock up through that channel, starting at the top of, there was that top of 92nd there. We were able to pull, start pulling rock down, pull rock in to help stabilize. What that rock does is it acts as, it does a couple of things. It slows down the energy of the water, but it also stops the erosion. Helps to stop the erosion of all that gravel and all that dirt that was getting washed down to the bottom of the hill. And the big picture on the right is just the picture of the BNP's that we have in place, just in case the rain came during this. And we had so much exposed soil that it's our responsibility to make sure that if rains did come, we kept any sediments and stuff from flowing into the downstream system. And this is the final picture. It's tough to get a good grasp of the work they did with this. And at the bottom, there's actually quite a large bowl at the wide part of all that rock, a large bowl where the water will be flowing into the culvert end there and then across the street, just the way it's designed to. This is a fantastic project by the storm department. We get calls every year during the winter with people that are having water problems. And in this instance, this was at 111th and about 218th. There was a lot of question on whether or not this was even our responsibility, because it went in between two homes. So our staff worked closely with Cheryl Rolsex and Dee to get, to make sure that we were doing the right thing, to make sure that we were supposed to be in this easement, making the upgrades, the needed upgrades through here. So this is just an inherently wet project. It's always wet. There's, you know, we have springs throughout the Eastville in Kent. And this is, you know, something they did during the summer, and you can see the amount of work, or see the amount of water that's still in this channel. So what they're doing now is just laying down fabric after they cleaned out all the debris, all the brush, and everything that was blocking up the drainage through here. They came through and then added this fabric as a source of erosion control and soil stabilization. This is the final result. We, as you can tell in my pictures, we like this rock. This rock is good. And again, we use it to stabilize the banks, stop erosion, and to slow the energy of the flow of water through there to stop further scouring. Garrison Creek and 212th, this has been quite an adventure for us. We found out in 2020, Wincow finally called us. And the reason I say finally is that they had had a problem with flooding in their parking lot in the past and hadn't said anything, hadn't called, didn't know they could call. I don't know what the situation was, but here we are. And this is, we looked all over the place on the south side of 212th. Let me back up. On the south side of 212th, where these guys are digging right now. And this was last year while they were doing this work, trying to find the culvert end. I was on vacation. I was having a wonderful time in Montana, getting some time away. My guys sent me a picture. They found the culvert, in the top of the culvert, four feet below the surface of the material you see there. Okay, this was part of an annexation. I have to add this. This is not something we knew about, okay? I'm just going to be brutally honest here. We didn't know about this. The guys showed me the picture of that culvert. It's another three feet to the bottom of that culvert. There was over seven foot of material through this channel, through this main channel for Garrison Creek, where it flows under 212th and flows out and ties into downstream somewhere, okay? So much material. Fortunately for us, we didn't have to haul any of that material off. It was all left on-site. We were able to excavate, turn around, dump it, and spread it out. And on the excavator right now, you can't see him, Josh Billyu, another gentleman I happily bragged to Bill for borrowing from him permanently. He's an excellent operator. He had a history of operating outside of the city. And I'm really happy to be able to use that skill set in the drainage department. So that work we did, we cleaned the culvert. Okay, this is a picture of the culvert this year, not after we cleaned it last year. We had it empty last year. So right now, we're working with our environmental staff to find the source of the material. Where is this coming from upstream? Obviously, we need to get a handle on this so we don't continue to have problems in the future. But this is them cleaning, you know, a picture of that pipe cleaning after spending a good couple of weeks with two Vector trucks out on 212th cleaning this pipe. Another historical issue, it's not, hasn't been a huge one, but it's been an annoying issue. This is on 6th Avenue, just north of Smith Street, at the, what is that, the south entrance to the Regional Justice Center. You can see, the picture on the left is where it ponds frequently when it rains. It puddles actually quite a bit there, or it did. So what we went in and did is we installed a drainage system, tied it into a system farther up the street there on 6th. And it flows now, flows out to Smith Street where it should. Just another one of those annoying things that we were able to get off our list, annoying for both the city and for the folks that use that entrance at the Regional Justice Center. East Chicago and Vandy Venter Avenue, but we've had trouble for years. And I'm going to be brutally honest about that, on Chicago Avenue, the culvert's up there would get overwhelmed with water. In Phase 1 of this whole project, there's going to be three phases to this project, was replacing all those culverts. I don't have those pictures here, but I have had them in previous presentations. We added a culvert to each one of those driveways, and now there's two culverts. And in all the rain events since, we have not had a single issue with driveways washing out or any issues with the drainage and the private properties on Chicago Avenue. So Phase 2 of this project is the corner here where Chicago meets Van de Venter. There's a little eight-inch pipe that comes across from the north, ties into the ditch line here. And Chicago, of course, comes in from the east. And we wanted to beef that up, because if water is going to go outside the drainage system here, it's going to happen right here. All right? So what we did is we installed a catch basin, a culvert, and an overflow beehive. This is that process. It, you know, takes quite a bit of work. Then there's them installing the catch basin. You can see all the debris and material that they had to break out of the way in order to get that done. And really, it's the close-to-final project. They didn't have the asphalt, berm isn't extended all the way around that beehive yet, but that's it. What they did is they added a nice, clear path for the water to enter. If somehow that culvert gets plugged up, it'll flow into the top of that beehive there or travel around with the berm that was installed later. Will travel around and end up in that ditch on Vandy Venter, eliminating problems with homes across the street there at Vandy Venter. And Phase 3 will be upgrading the culverts on Vandy Venter. We're sending a lot of water down there now. And so we're going to get to that part probably next summer. I can say with all confidence that we will be on there next summer. And that system will be good. No more issues. Fingers crossed. I'm not making any promises. Fingers crossed. And I'm going to end my presentation with a little warm fuzzy. Quite frequently, I can't say quite frequently, that sounds terrible, but every year, we do get calls.
At least once a year.
Yeah, we do get calls to save the ducks. I was with Josh Evans here on this call. I was in the neighborhood when I heard the call come in. So I met him up there, and we pulled, was there. It only shows four there, but we ended up, because there's always one stubborn one that just doesn't want to come out of the pipe. So we waited and waited and waited until we got the fifth duck out of there and got them all out of there. This is actually something that the guys really enjoyed responding to. They love this kind of stuff, you know? It's, and the people that called us in, and I think we even had a couple officers with us at the time, too, because they responded as well. And, boy, it was a fun moment. So with that, I'll end the presentation and open it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Great way to end the presentation. Councilmember Fincher.
Just wondering, what techniques do you use to save the ducks?
I gotta tell you, one time, I forget the employee's name. He was a part-time employee at the time. He used a quack call on his cell phone-
Oh, really?
-to try to lure the ducks out. Believe it or not.
That's appropriate, I think.
We got the ducks out. I did respond to one years ago where the fire department showed up and helped us out with a little bit of water to push the ducks out. You know, most of the time, it's just patience. You know, they come out. We'll have some, maybe somebody upstream pounding on a litter, something to make noise, something to scare them a little bit and push them out. They'll jump in the water. And we've got nets that are designed not to cause them any harm, really small holes, so their feet don't get caught up in them, their wings won't get caught up in them. So it's a really safe way to remove them from our catch basins. And we always try to return them. Always, or actually, mommas don't go that far away. They are protective. You could hear a quack in four or five houses up the street, but she was there, and she was letting us know. So with that, hope that answers it.
Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No doubt, you love your job, passion, no doubt about that. I saw a lot of equipment in the presentation. Do we own pretty much all our equipment?
We own quite a bit of the equipment. Our sewer department, they rent that mini excavator that you saw their operator on, on that pipe replacement, working on that hillside. That's a piece of rental equipment. We're working on, hopefully, purchasing it at some point, but right now, like I said, we're just expanding skill sets. We're seeing how far they want to go and how far they can go. This is a capable group. I'm really excited about the work that they're doing and the work that they're willing to do with enthusiasm.
Just to follow, do, for you, do you think you have all the equipment you need to do your job successfully?
We rent the equipment we have, that we need to do our job.
Okay.
Okay?
That's fair.
And we're working on, we'll put together a business case at some point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a very political answer. I like that. But thank you. I get it.
All right, all right.
All right, any other questions or comments? Thank you again for sharing. It's always great to see. People don't realize, you know, what you do in your jobs, and a lot of it is to make sure people can get around safely.
Absolutely.
So, thank you for that update.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our next presentation. I know some of you are looking very forward to this. It is the Green Kent update, so welcome to Brian.
All right. It's great to be here. Great to be back in council chambers. This is a Green Kent and Natural Resource Management presentation. Happy to be here. Council President, Council Members, Adam Mayer. So, I'm Brian Lemonhagen. I'm the Deputy Director of the Parks Department. I brought a couple of colleagues with me tonight to help tell this story. Garen Lee, our Park Operations Superintendent, and then Margaret Wagner, our Maintenance Worker for Natural Resource Specialist. We're here to talk about kind of the past, present, and future of natural resource management in the Parks Department, and also how Green Kent fit into that previously and how it could fit into that again in the, in the future. Back before COVID, we had done a presentation on urban forestry where we introduced Doug, who was a nice potted Douglas fir. We were looking for a home for him. We were supposed to do this presentation right around the time COVID struck, so we never got to close that loop. So, I wanted to make sure that you guys knew that Doug found a home at Clark Lake Park. He's very happy. He's actually over four feet tall now, so Doug is doing very well, so. And I also wanted to mention just, tonight, we're talking about natural resource management in the Parks Department. Our Public Works Department also manages hundreds of acres of natural area. They were also a partner with us on Green Kent, but we're only talking tonight about the natural area that Parks manages and kind of Parks Department's vision for how Green Kent could work in the future. So, natural resources are a big part of the park system. You can see in the top high chart, 500 acres of park land of the 1,180 or so acres are natural area. At the same time, most of our resources do go towards managing our developed park system, 95% to be exact, based on 2019 data. I did want to mention that we will be using 2019 data through this, throughout this presentation just because the last couple of years have really been skewed for all the reasons we understand. But again, so it's a huge part of our park system, but not a ton of our staff time. In the 2016 Park and Open Space Plan, if you, if you look at some of the parks with the highest potential recreational value, those parks that have the most to give to the park system moving forward, a lot of those parks have huge natural areas associated with them. And it just, it kind of just goes to show that parks that have a ton of different recreational opportunities, both active and passive, are the parks that have the biggest potential for recreation in the city. So, while our natural areas don't get a ton of attention now, they are a big part of our park system. We recently installed a trail counter at Clark Lake Park, and we're on pace to have something like 90,000 people walk past it. And Clark Lake Park is a park with an eight stall parking lot. It's very small. So, that's, it's a huge number of people finding their way to largely undeveloped park. 2019 NRPA survey found people want to recreate in natural areas. People want to find a secluded and relaxing place outdoors. They want to see scenic views of nature around them. They want access to lakes, rivers, ponds. They want to access trails for walking, hiking, biking. And they want to be able to observe wildlife. So, again, natural areas are really important to recreation on a national scale and then also on a local scale. Our Kent Parks Comprehensive Recreation Program Plan, three of the top 11 program areas that are rated as highest priorities for investment depend on safe and easy access to natural areas. That's outdoor recreation, outdoor programming in parks, and nature programs. So, again, just both kind of on a national level and also a local level, outdoor areas are very important. What are the benefits of investing in our natural resources? First and foremost, that's to improve social equity and inclusion. You know, when you go through our park, what we found in our program plan is that some of the barriers for underserved residents are things like transportation, they don't have time to recreate. And so, having natural areas that are close to them, that are safe and maintained is vital to them being able to get out into nature. Not everyone has the time to drive up to the mountains on the weekends to recreate. And removing barriers for accessibility, making sure our trails are retained, finding opportunities for local school kids to get out into Clark Lake or Mill Creek Canyon for planting projects or to release salmon fries, some of the things that have happened in the past in our parks. Huge opportunities to get kids out into nature. I think we all found through COVID that parks were one of our only real opportunities to kind of relieve some of that stress and mental health challenges that came with everything we've been through. Our parks saw more visitors than ever. Our natural areas are a huge part of that. There are opportunities for people to get out and fight things like diabetes and obesity. Studies show that if you live close to a park, you're more apt to use it. You're more apt to be active and lead a healthy lifestyle. And then just for kids, kids need to get out and play. I developed my love of nature by playing in the woods and playing in streams. And you know, had I not had that comfort and familiarity with, with playing in nature, I don't know if I'd be in the forest I'm in now. And then I think it's really important that we're good stewards of our public lands and facilities and both so that we can provide all the other benefits that I'm talking about here today, but also to provide opportunities for people to get outside and volunteer and, you know, create a sense of ownership of their parks and their public land. And also, it's important that we're a good neighbor. It's important that we don't let negative impacts kind of spill out of our land and impacting private property, impacting neighborhoods. So, it's important that we're taking care of our public lands for public safety and safe and easy access. At the last presentation we gave about urban forestry, we went through a lot of the kind of natural ecological benefits of urban forests and natural areas, stormwater, water quality, all those things. I don't want to rehash all of those at this point, but you know, I think every so often, something happens that just kind of reminds you how important our natural areas are. And the heat wave we experienced earlier this summer, you know, I know one of those days I had the chance to actually get out into Mill Creek Canyon, and it was 15 to 20 degrees cooler in the woods than anywhere else. And that's critical refuge for people during these heat waves. You know, it's only going to become more frequent moving forward, so it's important that we're taking care of our canopies. You can see the map from the Times that showed that Kent was hit a lot harder than the number of our surrounding neighborhoods. So, you know, just again, for all the reasons and new ones all the time, our natural areas are extremely important. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Garen Lee, and he's going to talk about where we've been with natural area management.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's great to see you all. For me, it's been a while, so it's nice to see everyone in person. So, I just wanted to start again what was at least reset a little bit and run, you know, consider what was Green Kent. You know, at the time, it was, I feel, a bold 20-year plan that was adopted to take a step towards managing our natural areas. The, but unfortunately, in 2019, as you all know, we had to hit pause on the Green Kent program primarily for resource challenges. We're facing some, the need to find some reductions. And the plan at the time was to step back from the program, which you can see was very robust in terms of a number of events, the number of volunteers and the volunteer hours, and give ourselves the time to update and evaluate where the plan was. It was timely. You know, we were approaching 10 years of, we were approaching the 10th year of the plan. And so, as we had developed the plan in partnership with Public Works, it was good for both departments to step back and take a look at what we had accomplished. And as part of the pause, we were going to focus on just the two priority locations in Clark Lake Park and Morale Meadows, so you can see in the 2019 program. What we actually accomplished was we had five community-based events. We did not have the individual steward site events that we had previously. And, but we are also able to support through opportunity a work party with the Green River Coalition at River View, so that was, which is still ongoing. And then, of course, in 2020, that was a year that we all learned a lot from in terms of being able to adjust, evolve, and evaluate. We were able to host a couple of very limited attendance events towards the end of the year. But that was all we were able to do in 2020. And at the time, looking at opportunity and recognizing some need, we shifted a lot of resources towards Mill Creek, which I'll mention here in a minute. But unfortunate, but not surprising that without stewardship, many of the areas previously managed under Green Kent were being taken by what was initially identified in the original plan as a challenge, which was invasive plant along with a lot of other challenges. So, you know, this is at Clark Lake, always being the optimist. There is opportunity in there. While this may look be disappointing, this is not unfamiliar because we've faced this challenge before and certainly we can face it again. And at the same time, there's increasing, the number of challenges remain, and some, it seems like they're increasing as the years go by. These photos are representative of several locations of Saltair, Saltair, North Meridian Park, the property that is across the street just south of West Fenwick, and of course, Mill Creek. The challenges are varied. There is public dumping, illicit use. More recently, in the past several years, fire has shown up more in our public area, or our natural spaces. And of course, vandalism and the ongoing maintenance need to respond to that. So, as we, as a snapshot of that, I guess, and we took a focused look, obviously with opportunity and support, at Mill Creek Canyon. You know, this is obviously one of the largest natural areas in our system. Over the years, it has faced this increasing amount of challenges, of a variety of challenges. And one of the things we focused on initially, which I think as you've heard before, there is a lot of ongoing effort, including upcoming master planning effort. There was a contract crew funded through capital dollars that helped us with some of our trail restoration in order to help, to restore some of the infrastructure so that people could, again, start returning to the canyon to enjoy it. But in terms of this part of the project, this was with cleanup. So, the initial cleanup utilizing contractors took eight months. As you can see, we phased the work, marching up primarily the northeast side of the canyon to address the areas we identified as having the most substantial amount of garbage and debris. You can see 100 tons and counting have been removed from the canyon. And for some reason, this became one of the metrics, but 350 shopping carts, and that number grows daily as well. And as you also can see, a substantial amount of cost. And what is ongoing, and we'll transition to as well, is, you know, the, while this was a heavy lift and a good reset in terms of removing garbage and debris, the challenges that we've highlighted or have highlighted a bit in terms of managing our natural areas remain. So, garbage and litter continues to show up. We do manage, still manage the presence of encampments and are paying, starting, or we are trying to wrap our arms around what it means to manage invasives in the Mill Creek Canyon. So, that is, that is the task that still faces us, faces us as an operations group. What we did pivot and create, and we were able to bring on board, thankfully, wonderful Margaret, who is, we were just joking earlier today that she is the green box up here. Much better to see her in person than green box. So, there's Margaret and three part-time staff. Two of the part-time staff are through our limited funding, which is in this year's and next year's budget, our budget, and then also the event coordinator. So, this is a position we've traditionally had that we utilize KCD funding to pay for this position. Yes, previous occupants of the position was Francine Sanchez and Desiree Kennedy. They've been wonderful folks. It's great to have them. They certainly helped us get to where we are today. And they are doing wonderfully, by the way, in their new positions elsewhere. But one of the challenges in general with part-time staff is, I think most are familiar with, is just maintaining a continuity of program. I think, right, one of the things we recognize with, like volunteer and events in particular, and I guess more specifically with the volunteers, the, it takes time to build that relationship, build the program, build awareness, and that's where consistency or stability in staffing plays a critical role. So, and just, and this next pieces of information, this is more about us as an operation teams in general. And it's meant to provide some context. We are used to utilizing part-time staff. And I think particularly today, you know, part-time, our staffing is a precious resource, but it, and it is also not without its challenges. So, for the staffing that we do have as an operations team, we rely on about 25,000 hours annually. That, again, that is, that is a division. But today, you know, the, the job market is very competitive. We've had, like everyone else, have had challenges recruiting that, the costs, because of that competitive market for bringing in our seasonal staff, again, has a net impact on our budget. Basically, we can't afford as much going forward without commis hitting in our budget internally. And as you can see, or I guess, well, I'll explain harder to see, we, our seasonal staff are a critical resource for us, right? They, especially during the peak season, they support our seven-day-a-week dawn-to-dusk operation in the areas that, not surprisingly, we have increased volume of use, the increase in operating hours. And, and so, we try to put those, have our folks come in and support us the best we can. So, it's just meant to share and, I think, put in context that, you know, we do, we do recognize utilization of part-time staff is important, but it also comes with its own challenges. And with that, I'll turn over next to Margaret.
Hey, everybody. It's nice to be here in front of you for the first time. I'm Margaret, the new Natural Resources Specialist in Park Ops as of February. So, yeah, thanks for the creation of that green box. That is me. I appreciate the context Garen gave you all about the canyon and challenges with part-time staffing, which has been historically a key piece of any natural resources management we have been able to do, as anyone with the Green Kent program is familiar. I'm going to start, if I can figure out the clicker, yep, by telling you what we're doing with the resources we do have. So, yes, there are challenges to using part-time staff. But the part-time staff we have characterized by the picture there and the fact that she's smiling after she's been picking up trash for hours, they're great. They care a lot. They're doing good work out there. We have been keeping pace with the need for cleanup out there. Some of that is the fine-tooth comb that we're able to do day in, day out that a heavy lifting contractor can't do. Some of it is new, encampments, dumping, any kind of illicit activity that continues to generate maintenance challenges out there. The needle number is slightly more depressing than the cart number, although, I don't know, easier to pick up in some ways because those carts in ravines are quite a challenge. Meant to be a symbol that, yes, we are still dealing with ongoing, less-than-desirable use at our sites. It places a challenge on our staff who often come from, you know, natural resources maintenance-type background. We have understandably had some turnover and some trouble filling those part-time positions. Once again, the people who've been in have been great. I can't talk them up enough. They've been saving me this summer. It means we have had to fill some of those gaps with FTE staff time. You can see our course numbers there. The takeaway is, it's a lot of hours to keep up, not backslide after that big investment. And both of those pieces are slightly unsustainable. We've got a lot of other demands on our FTE staff and no specific allocation of that time to natural resources besides me. And then the part-time hours are contingent on funding that decided to run out at the end of next year. So, we've been trying to keep enough statistics on spatial distribution of where we're working and how many hours we're spending doing what, so that when we do get to these next challenges of either funding is getting cut, what are we not doing? Or where's the opportunity to invest more in particular zones of the canyon where we really could make a difference? So, we tried to balance this a little bit. There's a lot we can do. We're out there doing weekly field inspections, trying to get out to as much of that 90 acres as we can on a weekly basis, keep up with trash removal. This is another one of our lovely staff members hiking trash out from a particularly inaccessible area. Honestly, hopefully, we one day want that alignment, that he's walking to be a nice nature trail behind some houses. nature trail behind some houses, it could be great, clearly needed a little bit of work before it gets there. We also, thanks to our in-house lead arborist capability, have been able to do emergency hazardous responses near some of those trails, so we do have the in-house expertise to respond to the fires, only sometimes literal, and thanks to the capital funding that we still have, we've been able to do some trail maintenance, it's really more of a refurbished maintenance, spruce it up, right off the entrance out of earthworks, we're hoping that lets us increase the kind of access and activity we would all like to see on the trails, maybe a little bit less of Ian with trash and a little bit more of, you know, the neighbor walking their dog. But we need to be realistic and upfront about what we can't do, things like regular routine preventative trail maintenance through the rest of that 90 acres, you know, the chunk that Earth Corps has been able to do, and once again, they're great, I can't stress enough, the people we do have out there are amazing, it's a relatively small portion. So we have been attempting to map the rest of the potential trails out there, but the possibility to really preventatively maintain or plan those trail systems, we just don't have the capacity right now. Anything approaching full-on ecological restoration and management to let this site really contribute to some of those high-level goals that we all know and own, covered earlier in this presentation, certainly covered by the history of Green Kent, we don't have the capacity to do the full-on ecological management out there, we would need to, to really maximize uplift. We all know that proactive work is cheaper than reactive emergency response, if we had the capacity to do proactive hazardous response throughout our system, we know it would be more effective in the long term, we just, we don't have it right now, we've got the expertise with some of the leadership of the arborist team, but we don't have the staff capacity, probably that's oversimplified, there's a lot more needs there, I know you guys heard a little bit of the urban forestry update, don't mean to oversimplify. Noxious weed control, anybody who's got the Green Kent background probably would walk in the canyon and tell me all about the knotweed in there, there's a bunch of it, there's tansy, there's poison hemlock, it's a little bit in the actual weeds, but the point is there are ecologically impactful and honestly, human health impactful noxious weeds out there, that until we're at vegetation management level, we're, we're just not going to be getting to that stuff. And then the thing that everybody wants, myself included, more comprehensive community engagement. So yes, the volunteer numbers, but also I've had, I think, three or four emails from nonprofits and schools around the canyon that want to get out there, they email and say, what are the opportunities to bring my students out, what are the opportunities to volunteer, what are the opportunities to bring my scout troop out? And that all would be so great to say yes to, but until we have the capacity to manage the site in a way where we know what we're shooting for, we know what's safe, we know what we can get them into and know that it'll be effective in the long term, we just can't really engage at the level we'd like to. So, a little bit of a downer, I'm gonna take it a little bit down, a little bit more down first, but then we'll bring it back up. So even though the level of service for Mill Creek is higher than, or lower than we would like it to be at the canyon, it's still higher than level of service at a lot of our, service at a lot of our other natural areas. So the 90 acres of Mill Creek Canyon, this is a piece of the property we're supposedly responsible for, Kent Parks Operations, there's 510 other acres where a lot of the times, our level of management is emergency response to sometimes literal fires, or, once again, the emergency hazardous response, but keep in mind that anytime I'm pulling on that expertise in-house, I'm fighting with a known backlog of other needed maintenance, some, some hazardous tree maintenance backlog. So anytime we're pulling to one site, we're making that call about where are we leaving other risk in the system? So then, we've clarified the problem, can be a little, can be a little bit of a downer. Question then, y'all I'm sure want to know is, so what would it, what would it take to do better? I know, you know, resources, it's always a challenge, and it's important that we advocate appropriately for what we need, so what would it take for us to do better? We can look back at our history with Green Kent, we can look at our history recently with Mill Creek Canyon, those both represent very different models, sort of a, attempts to be holistic in a slow and steady way with Green Kent, though under-resourced and ultimately not enough of the pieces needed to do it. We have the canyon, very intense, focused, resource-intensive project over so far a short-term period of time. We know we want something in the middle, we want effective resources long-term over the whole area. One of the things we can do is look to our partners, other practitioners in urban ecological restoration, very, one particular act partnership to look at is the other green cities, so Green Kent is just one, oh goodness, I should know the number, let's go with several green city partnerships. We pulled this one out, Green Kirkland, because it seems that they've done a better job, or at least they're further down, down the trail of integrating volunteer stewardship with actual staff natural areas management. So you can see there, you know, our numbers on one side, Green Kirkland's on the other, you can see it translates into, you know, more events, more people, key, also more acres. We had great volunteers, we had great volunteer numbers, we were having trouble translating that into actually building up to managing the acres we needed to. A couple of things, there's a lot in those bullets, but a couple of things I'll pull out, they've got a more varied and longer-term funding source, so once you tie into that surface water management, wouldn't have to be that in particular here, but coming up with the longer-term funding stream for natural areas management is important, they do work with other crews, like the Earth Corps crews that are called out there, and they have enough staff capacity that then they're able to spend time seeking out additional sponsorships to continue growth. So once you have some staff capacity, you can try to leverage other funding and create some really cool positive feedback loops, which we don't really have capacity to do right now, or not as much as we would like. So, I'm saying we would like more resources, what would we do with it? First aspect, we would take those relatively limited, although goodness knows it's been a lot of work, limited activities we've been doing at the canyon, that what we can do at the canyon, we would be able to do those at more sites, be able to look at high priority sites across the rest of our system, create, A, just more area that's being managed, but also spread across the city, so accessible to more people. We would face similar challenges to only doing, you know, the, the first tier of activities, but at least it would increase the ability for people to safely get out and recreate in our parks. This was a subset of sites that were selected because they have high conservation potential, but they also have high recreation potential. And then what we would really like to do is then add to that suite of activities, so these are the same, what we can't do at the canyon, those are those same bullet points, but in this case, it's what we would like to do across the high priority sites of our system. So things that then, if we can start doing more of these things in more places, it starts getting us the ability to tip the scale from reactive and maybe, you know, decreasing the bad, decreasing the loss, decreasing the degradation, to being proactive and making improvements in our system. I press all those buttons, we, we went over earlier about the benefits of natural resources But it boils down to, we need resources, we need, and this is a little bit of a mock-up, it's an example of the types of things we would talk about, you know, we would like full-time staff support for community engagement, that's partly volunteers, partly deeper connections with students and other community members beyond, beyond volunteer hours, it's also grant writing to start leveraging funding. So one of them, one of the potential partnerships we've got on the radar is partnership with KCD, we do already work with them, but the ability or the potential for us to look at using some of that funding to offset staff time would be a game changer, having FTE support for field, field crews to do some of the site maintenance activities, both at a caliber of work or a level of difficulty, and then at a scale that we just can't expect volunteers to do. You know, sometimes you need equipment, or to work over a huge area, or to work through the rain, or to manage a site for seven years before you really start seeing awesomeness, or to use herbicide, or thing, you know, things that volunteers just can't do. And then we would also, at that point, be able to leverage some of those partnerships to start the positive feedback loops of bringing more sponsorships, more grants, more collaboration, more efficiencies from working at scale to make the program more sustainable in the long term. So, I'm gonna pass it back, I believe, to Garen. It was really nice to talk at you all for the first time. Oh, never mind, there we go, sorry, guys, we didn't rearrange at all. Why now? I'm gonna, I'm gonna just not give up my microphone quite yet. Why now? So we've, if we've known these are all issues since, at the, at the very least, the beginning of Green Kent, which is a, you know, just a couple of years ago now, and honestly, before then, why is it a good time to double down, your resources are scarce, everybody is worried about funding, why are we, why are we gonna be asking for, for this right now? So, there are a lot of regional funding sources available. I'm sure you all know that we see big-ticket projects going in, in critical areas or natural resources areas across the region, a lot of cities and orgs are saying the things that we are about the value of investing in those areas, and there is funding for it, if we can leverage it, if we can bring, you know, the maintenance we can do with our staff as match, if we can say, hey, this is part of a holistic plan, we've thought about this, we promise this is gonna be a good project, we've got this longstanding and well-maintained community partnership, et cetera. If we had staff time to write, manage, and monitor grants, we could bring in an estimated $100,000 annually in grants. And these aren't even the big capital, let's rebuild a stream projects, these are either forest credits, forest equity credit grants, green the green, revedge projects, I don't know, I could, I could keep rattling. Now, there, there are a lot of grants regionally that we would love to be able to leverage and bring, bring to Kent, partly because we have a really, the suite of properties we have has a lot of potential. I know I spent a lot of time talking about the challenges and how a lot, what we can't do, but a lot of cities don't have the property, and if you don't have the property to start with, the natural areas that have been protected, you're not even in this, so in some ways, we're luckier than a lot. We would indeed, you know, by doing this now, it's recent enough to Green Kent, people still know, people still care about either their particular sites or the ethos, there are plants under Blackberry that can absolutely still be rescued, doing it sooner rather than letting it continue to go on lets us leverage our own past investment, both literal and emotional with the community. We can, you know, we can get those volunteer numbers back that everybody wants, we can get people invested in their parks, I think Garen or Brian earlier mentioned, that's one of the things that came out of COVID, is one of the only things people could do is go to the park that was closest to their house. So it's a good, I don't mean to say COVID, but you know, we kinda gotta find the silver lining of the cloud, and people are home, people are investing in the areas close to their house, it's a good time to be, trying to tie into that. And more and more science curriculum, and obviously more than just science, science, math, all of them we hear about, there are efforts among community partners and regional school districts to align, you know, curriculum students have to get with things you can do out in a park. And people have done that work, people have done curriculum alignment to say, you know, you can meet, you know, teachers who have, you know, no time to do more than what they're, too much they're already asked to do, here's the playbook, to meet this, this, and this requirement by doing this at your local park, like that playbook exists more than it ever has before, if we can tie into that. Is our hand back, or the next one? Okay, now's the actual handoff, sorry for the slightly, you know, the slightly bumpy
So, a little off of script, and I, but I think in proper context, right, something about, when we say, why should we consider this now, a lot of that's about timing, and, you know, I'll say here, this is your first chance meeting Margaret, but I think passion of staff is a part of that timing. And along with that, I want to also recognize we have Margaret, or, we have Mike Brundage, who is our arborist on staff, and Stacy Kessler sitting in the audience, they were here last time, which is already several years ago, presenting about our urban forest, but we have passionate staff, and there's no substitute for that, and it can't be created, that's what our folks bring to the table, and it's, listening to Margaret talk gets me energized too, and it's wonderful to have her and Mike and Stacy as they are staring back and saying, what can we do, what can we do tomorrow? So, along with the theme of timing, there's a few other things that we have, and then I think we are just putting a lot of information in front of you that, you know, we're, we're trying to consider this as comprehensively and thoroughly as possible, recognizing the challenges that face us. Previously, in past collective bargain agreements, there was a cap on the number of volunteer hours that we could host, that no longer exists. So, in that context, you know, we're, the sky's the limit as much as we are able to support. We have a lot of access to technology, you heard about the Treekeeper 8 program, which is, is the host program or the database about our trees specifically, but we are working on asset management, Margaret and Mike and Stacy and others have been working comprehensively with our in-house GIS team to create collector information, I think as Margaret mentioned, there are many ways we are collecting information to help us have planning, or, there are many ways we are collecting information to better inform our planning, both in the short term and long term, helping prioritize the resources that we do have, I think that puts us in a better position to be evaluative. We also have, the Parks Department has a full-time marketing coordinator, Love Haley, but what that does, right, it allows us to better utilize our social media platforms in terms of putting the word out, what do we have going on? I think as I, it's, I'm always reminded, which is both, is unfortunate but exciting, of how many folks do not know there is a wonderful place not far from their house. I think we, at every volunteer event we were able to have, and you asked that question, how many people have been here before, it always amazes me how many folks have not. And just, I think as we keep hitting on this, and as Margaret highlighted, it's been an unfortunate confirmation that has come out of our past year, but people enjoy their spaces. You know, it, still today, we see increased use across the board, not only in our natural areas, but in our formal, formerly developed areas too. A lot of folks want to be out there, I, I'm hoping, and I believe that in searching for alternate forms of ways to get out over the past year, people have rediscovered their parks and that they do exist and they are wonderful. And in general, there's, there's, we are not the only agency who's staring at managing their natural areas in different ways and what's it gonna take. I think any, any city, you know, we can talk, we've talked to our peers, I'm sure you have conversed with yours, that managing natural spaces in the urban areas and developing areas is increasingly challenging, and it's something we would like to embrace, you know, and that's part of timing, that is a challenge that is placed upon us. And I think continuing the similar theme of information, you know, we, we are in one way lucky that our part of the country has, has been a part of job growth, I mean, we've seen the increase in pressures in the housing market and other things like that, but all that translates to that there are more people around, more people are coming, more people are here, and that is about, translate, in terms of national area, natural environment, that's urban pressure. And then, I guess, this, this slide really is kind of a summary of an assessment of our experiences, not only through the Green Kent program and recently, one of the pieces that we are getting out of our Treekeeper 8 platform is so far, we've been able to inventory 6100, a little over 6100 trees, seems like we are tracked, on track to say that 10% of those trees are, need to be managed and removed, and as you can see, under our current pace of removal, that'll take 28 years. Again, it's, it's not meant to be a depressing number, it's just representative that we are taking a close look at our resources against what the need is. And then, they also say it's not only looking at our own experiences, and this, I think as Brian mentioned last week, as we were putting the presentation together, it's the experience is the folks in our community, and we were able to collect some responses from one of our, from our Green Kent stewards, and just highlighting this one, and I'll, I'll read it, but we have it up there, is, "To this day, I hold the values and lessons learned from being in Green Kent for four years. My hope is to see this program continue and evolve for the well-being of everyone, to support themes of biocultural conservation, connection, and environmental justice. Because of, because the well-being of the earth and people are deeply intertwined, we can't live without one another." Now, this steward is a gra, just graduated from UW. just graduated from U-Dub with a few degrees and two minors, and points to her experiences with the Green Kent program and stewardship as a source of igniting her passion in many areas. And I think it's these, out of all the experiences, it's this type that is the most confirming, I think, of the value of our natural spaces. With that...
Thanks, Garen. Yeah, and I will just add that, you know, we got a number of these responses from former stewards, and it really was a, a great, kind of, pick-me-up to go through and read those and just understand the impact that we had on, on these students' lives and where they're going, you know, kind of with, in part because of the, the lessons they learned at Green Kent. So, they're really amazing, and maybe we'll share those with everyone, send them out on an email. So, at the, you know, end of the day, natural resource management, you know, taking a proactive approach is, is generally seen as a core business of the cities that supports overall community health and equity. It, in the long run, saves financial resources, whether it's dealing with invasive species or costly cleanups. And it is a great opportunity to leverage regional funding to do a lot more. So, next steps. Mill Creek Canyon is gonna remain our top priority moving forward. We are gonna have a limited number of volunteer events. A couple, we're working on a couple of things in the fall, and then probably, you know, four to six next year as well. We're currently in the process of updating our park and open space plan, and it should be done around March or so next year. One of the things I'm really excited, we're gonna take a look at, the last plan really focused on recreational value. Nature value is something that we're gonna try to layer on top of that in this plan, kind of finding a way to look at holistically across our whole system, all the things that we talked about here today, all the reasons why our natural areas are important. So, that's a pretty exciting part of, of that plan update. And then, we're gonna evaluate submitting a budget request in next year's budget process to increase our level of service for natural areas for the 2023, 2024 budget. I think after laying out such, you know, I think, in our minds as a compelling case to invest in natural resources, we are still in a position that it's just gonna be something that we're evaluating as we move forward, because there's a lot of need across the board in the Parks Department. There's a lot of need across the board in the city. So, you know, clearly, there's a huge need. There's a huge benefit that would be gained from investing, as we, as we talked about here today. But there's a lot of need all over the place, and that's just the fact of the matter. So, with that, we'll open up for questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Councilmember Core.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian, Garen, and Margaret for the presentation. I've been waiting three and a half years for this, you know. I was a Green Kent Park steward, and with my son, we enjoyed working in our parks. So, I'm looking forward to bringing that back. But what I wanna know is, I guess, what exactly, like, if we are able to fund this, as we know, we, I've always been a supporter, and we all know benefits of our parks, how it positively impacts our communities, and positively impacts the life, you know, basically, our way of living here in the community and the neighbors. And it also deters crimes happening at our parks, especially natural resources. What is the plan to bring back Green Kent? Well, I, so, we started, got, got the idea, but is that like a 2022, 2023 plan, 2024 plan, or we're starting sort of small and then see where we get?
So, yeah, so I think the, the next step would be, kind of, when we go through the 2023, 2024 budget process, evaluating whether we're gonna submit a budget request then, and then, kind of, depending on what that request is, kind of, what, what that would allow.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much for this presentation. Like Councilmember Core said, we are looking forward to bringing this program back and getting our volunteers back out there in the community and doing what they can to help clean up their parks and their, the shared spaces that they like to enjoy, so.
Great. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. All right. That brings us to the end of our workshop. So, council, we will take a break and come back for the council meeting at 7:00. So, thank you very much, everyone. We are adjourned.
... located at Garrison Creek Park.